Well. Fund county contract. But um. It's difficult when we've got such a high percentage of our staff and benefits. Going to employees in our entire budget to start. You know, saying, well, you can't have new pencils and you can't have new paper and you can't. I mean, we don't wanna. We don't wanna. I I don't want to. I guess I can't speak for the rest of the commission. But I don't want to go through piece by piece by piece. Okay, you get less four hundred fifty dollars and you get less twelve hundred. And when you start doing all of that to add up to a significant number in the budget. For some programs, that can be a lot. I mean substantial. What if we can't get any office supplies? What if we can't use the copier? Things like that. Um. In giving half to the county contracts and you're providing this spreadsheet. That would be. A reduction of.
Are you looking at just the contracted services?
I'm looking just at contracted services.
But roughly one twenty-five.
Well, this includes contracted services, economic development, and historical.
Great. So it's about a hundred thousand dollars different. That's gonna be one.
Yeah, we would have to lower the general fund budget by four hundred and two thousand six hundred. As opposed to the six ninety-four, one eighty.
If we did that, that would do a hundred thousand dollars. Approximately, right?
Well, we would. So the difference between the six ninety-four, one eighty-one and the four hundred and two thousand six hundred would be the difference. The amount we would save if we cut these and that. But we'd still have to reduce the general.
Great, great. Um, then I have another. Can I ask some other question, Madam? Oh, I'm sorry. I may really quick.
Sorry. On the subject of the historical society, we do have an agreement with the historical society that we will levy a quarter of a mil. And if we choose to go below that, it requires sixty days.
Are you saying we can't cut it?
Not for this yet. I think the deadline has passed.
Wow, something to learn.
Lots of.
Okay.
Make a note of that for next year now.
Great. Okay.
Might be zero next year.
So when we're looking at cash. And my spreadsheet, whether it's the first one or the second one. The spreadsheet for cash, one is. Well, it's both fourteen million, three hundred fifty-five thousand, eighty-two dollars. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that's what we have in the bank right now.
No, that would be the estimates.
Okay.
For the end of.
Do you know what we have at the bank right now? I'm sorry, I'm asking all these questions. I don't mean to.
I found out this, actually, there was a question on the patch.
Yeah.
It was eighteen million at the end of June, but that also includes. All the funds that are listed below the general fund. The general fund actually had. A balance at the end of June of twenty-one million, five sixteen. Um, projected at the end of the year at fourteen million, five twenty-two.
And Colleen, um, I I can't remember what I had for lunch yesterday. But it seems to me that in recent years, when we've looked at balancing the budget and maybe you. Or some of the commission members can remember, or staff. Um, it seems to me that, was it last year that we spent twelve million to buy down the budget or was that?
Fun cash.
Uh?
To buy them down.
Yeah.
I don't really sell it.
I was thinking that part.
I don't.
Oh, it wasn't that much.
Twelve million dollars.
But right now. Guesstimate. We have twelve million dollars in cash carry forward, approximate. Guesstimated, or fourteen million, I'm sorry. Um, right now. Even if we, if we sitting right here. And if I said, okay, instead of doing that cuts, the whatever, the whatever. And if we needed to take cash carry forward. To fund the rest of the budget with the three percent increase on our taxes, how much would that cost? If we, if we took. If we looked at the budget right now and had a three percent increase for taxes. How much cash carry forward would it cost to buy, to to? Fund the budget, right where we're at right now?
I can only get under the free right now.
Oh, um, so. The fourth, well, it depends if you're cutting the contract.
Well, do it without first and then do it with. I'm sorry, I gotta calculate.
Just ninety-four, one eighty-one. Six ninety-four, one eighty-one is with contracted services?
Yes.
So that we need to cut the general fund budget. I mean, we can reduce the cash. I don't know the amount of.
Do we know, I'm sorry, my questions. Do we know, and maybe Sheriff Schneider can help me with this. Do we know if there's any movement on the contract with DOC right now or not? For the beds at the jail?
Sure. So, um. Chair Hagan, members of the commission, just, I just checked with Miss Morris dead and if I'm recalling our budget. For twenty twenty-five correctly. We have approximately just over a million. I believe it's one point one million in revenue from housing out of county prisoners. Uh. We could potentially, we got our certificate of occupancy, so we could potentially start housing people possibly even next week. Or this weekend in the new pod. Uh, the DOC, our contract is not finalized, but I just had a meeting with some federal partners yesterday. We had meetings with federal partners two weeks ago, asking for beds. Uh, we could obviously start selling those beds as soon as we occupy or can get staff to staff it. And uh. With the hundred and fifty-six days left this year. And we sell seventy-two beds off. Leaving a couple for ourselves. Uh, that's, that's obviously starting tomorrow, which isn't gonna happen. That's over a million dollars. Uh, that we could add to the revenue that was not accounted for this year. Uh, the other thing with, with Miss Morris's numbers as far as the. Uh, revenue from the beds. Something that wasn't clarified is. By dropping the number from sixty beds to seventy-two beds. Doesn't mean those twelve beds are gonna be full of prisoners from this, the county of Grant Forks. Like I just said, we've had two meetings and they want as many beds as they can get right now. The intention of that is to allow us some flexibility. So if we do have any influx of prisoners, we could house people in those, but when we're not housing people there, we can sell those beds off as well. So in actuality, we should still be very, very close to the two point six eight million revenue. For twenty twenty-six on those beds. Even if we retain twelve extra out of the seventy-two.
Is the federal reimbursement rate per day different than the one we're talking about with the state DOC?
Not yet. We're locked in. I follow. We're locked in until December. But they're all willing to renegotiate for January.
So I remember, did we change it? Have we got a?
No, no. There was. There was seventy-two beds in the original, not even the original, the amended design by the former administration. Uh, they worked on adding an additional ten beds to the unit. But the conversation with the state was always for the seventy-two.
Right.
So that would pick us up an extra ten at the county side. I mean, DOCR just did their inspection and we got dinged in several areas and one of them was. Over bunking areas because we're not meeting the criteria of the amount of space these prisoners need. To actually get up and walk.
Yeah.
We can no longer trip. It's called triple monkey. We can no longer throw. A boat on the floor and say, sleep here. Can't do it. We're in violation. We continue to do it. Don't have to worry about renting to anybody. Um, so we gotta make modifications for that. Uh, and that's, you know, part of that is something that I hate doing, and that's throwing criminals back on the street. So they can come steal your stuff, do whatever, run from the police. And then we got nowhere to put them. Well, we gotta lock them up for days. We gotta throw somebody else back on the street. So. I mean, the jail wasn't built for the state to house ten prisoners there. I I get that. I get both sides of the argument. I get that we can't afford it. I'm not arguing that either, right? Uh, but the reality is, if we wanna do our job to try to keep people locked up. Or throw people in jail that need to be thrown in jail, even if it is for a day or a night. We need to retain a couple of beds on it. We'll sell the rest. We gotta have some room. We can't, we can't just sell every single bed that's there and try to make new beds to sell those to pay for this. So. We'll sell as many as we can. I mean, that's, that's our objective, right? If you're not using it, let somebody that can use it, use it.
All right, go for it. Colleen, with the budget that we have sitting in front of us. We don't have any contract dollars put in from Department of Corrections at this point. Am I correct in that assumption?
Can you increase the prisoner board payment?
Okay.
Three point two nine.
Okay.
That would increase to reflect sixty beds to the state.
Okay.
But you could increase that number. What I'm saying is, we would sell the beds that we're not using. I just wanna have a little control over maybe tall beds. That'd be great. We're gonna sell them. So you could probably increase that number by another three hundred thousand safely, if not more. Back to where it was originally with the eighty-two beds.
Um, true. I would like to. I would like to move a motion to use. Six hundred ninety-four thousand or whatever it is to balance the budget, including the three percent tax increase. Um, using cash carry forward to balance the budget for the twenty twenty-six year. Keeping the contracted services the way they are and um. Doing the change in the, well, that's already been made. The change in the um employee uh HRA coming in monthly instead of all pre-ordered. Um, but that would be my motion. Using cash carry forward plus the three percent increase in taxes. Um, to balance the twenty twenty-six.
In the dollar mode, is that gonna change?
It will if you have been.
Okay.
But I agree. But I'm just saying, like, with the motion, does it have to be dollar specific? Can it just be cash carried forward? Because if we make any adjustments to the budget.
Ms. Womsted, that's a question for you. Do we have to, um? Do we have to say the very exact dollar amount or just say cash carry forward to balance the budget of no more than? Seven hundred thousand. Is that okay? With seven hundred thousand dollars, cut it?
Yeah.
Okay, I make that motion.
I second it.
But if we add in three hundred.
Yep. Okay, I, I make that motion.
Second. I'm gonna do it all then. Number one, that's exactly the reason we're in the shape we're in right now. Continuing to take money to pay operational expenses out of cash reserve. I got my twelve pages. Here we go. Cause you put, you threw a motion before we could even talk. So let's go. Um. Now I got the floor. So get comfortable, everyone. Um, starting with this page here. Um. You have it show two Yak attendance of two hundred and twelve, one oh seven. And somewhere else I found him at one sixty-one, whatever. So how to go up fifty thousand dollars? One sheet says, one, number one sheet says the other.
This. Sheet is just the cost of it without. I mean, that's the cost of what it costs to add to.
So the one sixty-one is the real cost. That's what it costs to hire, right? Okay, that's what I'm making. Okay, download next. You have three percent step at the number, two and a half percent cola at the number. So if you give a three percent step and a two and a half quarter, two and point four percent cola. How does that only equal three hundred thousand? Because one eighty-one and two twenty-two is four oh three. Eight hundred. Sixty-six. And this is not supposed to, I don't understand how that works. Because if a step is that a cost and a cola is that cost, then if we get a cola and a step, should those two costs come together and make a number? Which is higher than that number?
Well, and the, so on the one sheet, we have the negative eighty thousand. That's due to getting a step. This year, which isn't.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking at this one here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So everyone just received their step, yeah.
Yep. This is the one I'm looking at. So I am baffled by. Should a step and a cola? Equal a step and a cola?
One plus two, twenty-two thousand.
Yeah, if it's, if the step is one eighty, if that's the cost and the cola, that's the cost. Didn't you add those two together? Because we're gonna give a cola and a step? Have we got everyone back?
No.
Okay. Um, would that be because on, on a cola and a step, the steps on the anniversary date, colas are effective Jan one?
Well, I did that because.
So it's not a cumulative increase, Commissioner Birkey. It's an increase and then another increase later on at an, on an anniversary date. If that makes sense.
They don't all get the same step at the same time.
Maybe I'm just reading wrong, but to me, if it says the step costs one eighty-one, seven thirty-seven. That's what it's gonna cost for the whole year for all employees to be stepped. Is that right? Because if then in the cola, for the whole year for every employee is two twenty-two. And it should be a little over four hundred. Okay, I, I. We can decide that on one Tuesday night, I guess, but. I don't understand. I'm not afraid to say it, so. Maybe I'm just not getting it, but I, I, to me, one plus one is two, if that's the numbers. So I, I don't understand that one. So. Okay. Okay. When I went through here, we're having, showing a mill in, this is the one here. We're showing a mill increase of four point oh four percent. And on this document states that the. Three point four seven percent of that, four point oh four. Is because of new growth. Is that correct? And so then the actual value increase for the county. Was point five seven. The basis of value barely went up for the whole county and that three point four seven is all the. New buildings, whoever, whatever came on, this, that, and all that. Am I understanding that correctly? Okay. Thank you.
In discussion.
Yeah, I asked to talk.
Okay, I thought this was cheap, switching the subject.
No, this is the budget.
Time the budget.
I'm on the budget. I'm not, no, I'm not. This is all budget all day. No.
There is a time limit. I don't know if there is for how long, you know, twelve pages.
Well, the time limit's when, when we're done with the meeting. Uh, we'll take a break if we need to. We, uh, this is too important of a deal to be worried about time. Um. All right, that one's down. Okay, on this page. I got some questions. Number one, this would be for Ms. Womsted. Uh, on the left, far left. About there often. Uh, starting with the. Uh, historical society. Yeah, I'll wait. Yeah. Yeah, that's it. Okay, I just wanna, so I wanna get this straight, so it's not gonna happen again. So the historical, we have to give them sixty-day notice?
Correct, equals or小于 six below the point two five mil.
Okay.
And we're at two point five mils now, correct?
The seat, the seniors.
That's what the request.
So we are less than.
Hopefully that's a lot less. And senior citizens, that's a vote, so we have no say in the matter, correct? The city voted, I think it was nineteen seventy-four, for one mil.
Nineteen eighty-eight.
It may be fine, we're still, we can't touch. Okay, emergency fund, we can address, we can control that. The veteran service, we control. Right, right. Uh, extension service.
Want to discontinue the tax levy?
So I don't wanna discontinue, but can we, can we? Modify that amount, a request? Did they ask for, I'm just gonna make a number. Did they ask for a hundred thousand? Could we set it, cut it to fifty? If you want, I can, we can skip that and you come back to that, if you want me to get that. Okay, health department, we, we can control that, right?
That's subject to a contract we have with.
Right. Special assessments, we control. Estate tax, we do not. There is some diversion, we do not. Water resource board. Which is different from the. Joint water resolution. So the water resource board, can we reduce what they ask for? Boy, look, I. I know the joint water, we cannot touch that. We cannot touch the hamlets because that's voted on. We cannot touch the soil conversation, conservation. That just leaves the water resource board, the library. And I know we can do the library, as the city ratchets.
So if they're going to the water resource board, the county commissioners, they either disapprove their budget, amend and approve their budget. Or approve the budget as submitted.
Okay.
So we can amend it.
Okay, and then the library?
Subject to an agreement with the city that pertains to the library, which requires us to levy.
Right, but I've been saying, but if they ask for X, we can reduce. As long as we maintain funding. I'm not talking about eliminating it. I'm just saying, if they ask for X, can we cut X some?
The agreement um. With the city provides that we will levy up the maximum.
So you're saying we have to limit four mills because we're not doing that now?
If, if they request.
Oh, the city request?
Two.
Okay, the library request or the city request?
The library, city department, so.
It must come through the city then. Yes, if the city would have to ask us to fund more. If we, if we tried to cut it, they'd say, no, that we have done.
So I think our agreement for the library services is that um. We will fund their request up to a maximum of four mil. So if they ask to go above that, we can deny it.
If they ask for. They ask for a four hundred thousand dollar raise this year, we would have to give it to them? If the city would have to do that, though.
If it's within.
Yeah. But not the library board. The library board, the library board runs the library, but if it's a city department, I would assume the mayor would have a final say.
Library board is administered, is administered, you know.
I don't believe. The, our agreements with the library board, I can't speak to. What I can say is it's uh. With the city library.
Yeah.
That we contract with provide services, which is different in some structure.
Okay, I'll need a copy of that contract. And uh, okay, is there an opt-out clause in there?
No.
The contract is that.
So the library director submits the library budget to the mayor's office.
Yeah.
And then that's when.
The library board is adversarial only. The library board doesn't make any monetary decisions.
For him about the library and the budget.
I'll get hold of. So basically, the way I'm hearing it is, the city decides what the county has to pay for the library. Am I wrong in that comment?
I think the library budget and maybe the two, you know, is approved by the library. Before it's.
It's adversarial.
I believe, but we don't have like the final say on this is what we're spending. No, it's a review budget, basically.
We acknowledge that dollar amount and take that forward to the city, but there's no um. The, the board is adversarial. The board doesn't say, oh, you're giving this dollar amount to this or to this library member we don't agree with. I mean, we're not, it's not micromanaged at all.
Well, the library director presents it, we review it, ask questions, and that's what gets submitted for a final review.
It could be. Okay, that's right. If I wanna cut it today, can I make a motion to cut the budget for the library? I can't make it any simpler. Okay, I'll need a copy of the contract, not today, but if you're currently printed. On May five. On August fifth, can you just give it to me then? Great, okay. And I'll meet with the city on that myself. Okay, so I'll work on the library and the extension. I hope everyone understands what we're doing to ourselves here. We have sixty-three pairs of handcuffs on our budget. We have all these things. And when, when the taxes go up. Do the people go, the, all the water board raised, oh, the live, no, you know who raised taxes? The county commission raised taxes. It's just a bad way to do it. We're, we're, we gotta give money to people and we literally have no say. It's nutso.
But the services that we provide shouldn't cost any more money. And the services that were mandated by our century code.
Well, Gracie, Gracie's making a list of the century code. We'll, we'll be going after that come next session. The point.
Two years.
Yeah, well.
A year and a half.
I'm a dog with a bone.
Happen every month, every year.
I know. And maybe some of these questions should have been asked by commissioners the last twenty years, but I digress. So I'll wait for the extent, answer on the extension service and I will get with the city on the library. And get a copy of the contract and see when you go there. But you whittled down your opportunities, you know. We sit here discussing about trying to give an employee's raise. Well, time you get through all the people we can't cut. There's not much left. Um. And I just wanna mention a, a side note on the cash balance. You've got a five million dollar sheriff building payment due down the road and we keep kicking the can down the road. That's why at the end of the road, you have a lot of cans. You've got a potential, we're, we're using. Software from whatever decade that's out so far to date. And by the way, I still need a price on that. I want to know the price. To get the right software that does everything. So we got old software, we got a building we gotta pay for. Uh, we've got a potential revow of the courthouse. He just, he keeps spending it. We just. Give around the money one day.
Disappointingly, the software, the software, I mean, you can buy the software, but in another year, you're gonna need to buy more software. It consistently.
But what we have now, as they say, is so out of date and we can't enter, it doesn't interface. Uh, uh, no, I'm talking about the whole city system. We can't update our payroll.
The county system.
A county, I'm sorry. The county system, the payroll doesn't talk to it, whatever. We gotta replace everything. So we can become efficient. But she, she talked about that, uh, that we can't do it right now because it doesn't. Chit chat to itself. Well, that's what I'm talking about. I wanna know the price for everything because you know what? If we don't have prices and we don't plan. It's just gonna keep getting worse. That's why that stuff's gotta be on like the, the six-year capital improvement plan. So let's just say it's half a million, I've annoyed it. Let's just say it's five hundred thousand. We gotta pick a year and stick it on there. Five hundred grand. So we're ready. Otherwise, we just keep using old payroll and just keep using those time cards.
I'll bring it to the August fifth commission meeting, Commissioner Birkey, so.
I just, I see the best guess you get on the money, just so I can.
Deal has that. We'll bring it up on the pair. Okay.
And also not only the.
And also not only the cost upfront, but then what you would end up having to pay either monthly or annually to continue to utilize that stuff. Because there is a cost involved.
Whatever. We could just go back to pads and pants, that's fine with me, but I just, why not have the power guys drive around with pickups with half a blade on? I mean, thi- this job is just as important as your other job, and the people should have up-to-date equipment, which is the software. Otherwise, we can't. Well, that's by why you still keep doing time cards. I, I'm not gonna go through this detail, but this is, I asked Mr. Ford to show you how much money we're not gonna be collecting as we continue to let people not pay taxes. You just made a motion to raise taxes. Here's a list of all the people that aren't paying their fair share.
From previous years.
Well, I'm.
And some have already been paid off, and I believe in twenty twenty-six, the end of twenty twenty-six, we will see one of the TIF or one of the pilot programs and, and then that will go into the tax base. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, some of them ended twenty forty-nine, which I will be around to see. Uh, on the capital improvements plan. Oh, Bill, uh, at one point last year, we had re-roofing the jail. Where are we at? The old jail? And that's not on here?
That, that got approved, that got approved for capital improvements this year, that project is in place, and CL input has been recreated.
Where's the jail?
Yeah, this fall for the old.
No, no, I, I, I meant, uh, I'm sorry. The old part of the current jail. Uh, the originally, there was a plan to re-roof for over a three-year phase.
That's on there.
Okay, what, what, what's it under?
Disney Field. That's on that, that's on that plan.
What year?
I believe twenty seventeen.
Reseal jail six seams?
No.
Okay, I can't find it.
That would be. It wouldn't, uh, Bill, I don't think it would be on the sheet coin handed up, cuz this is for twenty-six.
So I gotta, I gotta five-year plan, okay?
It, it's, I, I know it's in my list, I don't know. I can't say why it's, why it's in print.
Okay, that's fine. Can you, on the format that you're in here, but I, I do know it's on there. Okay, can you email me that? An original plan was to re-roof it over three years.
Yes.
I'd like to look at it, which obviously you pay mobilization costs every year.
Inevitable.
It's gonna cost more. I'd like to see a plan of what it would cost to pay it and what.
Yeah.
If you can put vocals, all right. That goes back to planning. So there's another roof job we gotta have, you spend your cash reserves now. And, and if you do it three years instead of one year, you're gonna pay more for that, too. It's gonna cost you more. Okay. I'm gonna go through the jack stuff. I know you guys don't wanna do it, but I, I'm the math guy. Guys wanna make sure you see what you're doing here. First of all, just say this, there's a reason fifty other counties don't have, either they're too small that they can add. Uh, if you look at this one here, you have on here additional jail COs. Does that mean we can house people in those beds that are on the other side? Cuz why else would we be hiring jail COs?
That was just.
Okay, can we use that for adult housing?
It wouldn't be very, you're talking to sixteen beds.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if it's sixteen beds at a hundred dollars a day, it'd be sixteen hundred forty-eight, uh, six hundred thousand. Sixteen hundred times three, sixty-five, five eighty-four.
So what do we get on a daily basis for the youth that we have housed in that facility? Three fifty, so three fifty compared to a hundred?
No, no. I'll get to that. That's fun. That's, yeah. You don't wanna get in a battle with me. Trust me. That's five hundred and four, eighty-four thousand in revenue for that. The total, if you wanna go back to that, the total revenue for the act for the year is six fourteen, six thirty-one, let me see. I have it in here. Six, six hundred fourteen, five hundred, right? So it's basically the same. However, that five eighty-four would pay for those four more jailers, it would pay for the two deputies to transport. Uh, as far as the people who weren't, would be laid off, the jails hiring. Uh, cost of the vehicles, if they last five years each, would be thirty thousand a year. So the point being, we would save money. I know you guys aren't interested, but, uh, I'm just telling you, we're getting played like a set of areas from the state and the other regions, the other counties in this region.
I wonder, can't say miss county that have needs. What about them?
I'll get to that.
What about the teenagers and the kids that have?
Madam Chair, do I have the floor? Thank you. Uh, let's talk about, well, I'll get to that. Uh, the issue is we are, we are, there's something called fixed costs. We have this building available for the state and all these other counties at any time at their beck and call. The fee we charge them in no way, shape, or form comes close to compensating on a fixed cost. That building's there twenty-four seven, we're paying on it, we have to heat it, we have to cool it. The staff's there, whether there's somebody there from another county or not. We should be drawing up contracts with every county that wants to even think about. When you're there, you have to have a contract with this that pays a fixed cost fee, and you also should then pay a fee per child. We should set the same kind of contract here with the state. They love to have that and have that available, but they don't wanna have that building, they want us to have it. And so what we're doing is, the citizens of Grand Forks, let's just say we don't hire the two, whatever, the county of Grand Forks is paying one point three two million dollars a year to subsidize the state of North Dakota and the regions in this area. And if we wanna keep this, then let's get on this and get this, and get some contracts written. They're, they're killing us. They're, they have this thing available, but they're not paying anywhere close to what it costs to be available. The sheriff doesn't patrol Trail County. We don't do the books for Wallace County. We don't plow for Steel County. We're, we're taking in an entire region of stuff, and they will drop someone off when they want for this amount of time, and then it's done, and we still have all those bills to have that brand-new spanking, state of their building there, ready twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. Yeah, sure.
So I did have a meeting this morning about contracting with the city of Grand Forks, because the majority of the kids that we get are coming from the police department to have them pay an overhead to have the availability of having a center put twice. It won't be able to look, be looked at until the twenty twenty-seven budget, obviously, it's too late for twenty twenty-six, but I did speak with Lisa Johnner, she said it's difficult to do an overhead fee when you're also charging daily rates to the other counties, and we are paying a daily rate for the beds. So.
Well, I would love to look at an overhead fee versus the daily rate then, because.
But the problem with that is, I can't guarantee beds, so, I mean, especially with Minot potentially closing down, leaving us as one of the only two detention facilities in the entire state. I got a phone call yesterday from Wisconsin looking for a bed, for a juvenile. No beds in Iowa, no beds in Minnesota, no beds in Michigan, no beds in South Dakota, no beds in Illinois. Juvenile beds are a hot commodity. They're gonna sell. And I can't guarantee beds to people because that puts us in a situation where we don't have beds for our.
I'm, I'm I'm just bringing it up. Keep doing it the way you want it, keep writing off those losses, keep raising those taxes. It's, it's try, go talk to anything, anybody about fixed costs. We are, we are losing our shirts off this, and we should not be doing this. We should not be subsidizing the state of North Dakota. The county taxpayers are paying for county services. They're not paying for Benson County, Trail County, Wallace County, state of North Dakota, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And that's what we're doing in this plan. So if you guys are happy, I still have the floor. I love Robert's rules of orders. All right, I wanna get to, uh, wanna get to the cars, the sheriff's department. Uh, go us out here again. Uh, I would like to see a comparison between the, the state bid for the Explorer versus the Tahoe for the four-cylinder and the six-cylinder. The cabin space, the gas tank, how many gallons it holds, and the city highway MPG. The cost of the individual items that make it, the car, the cage, all the stuff they have to do, and the cost to install it, who's doing it? Uh, I also.
Move it over, I'll show you.
All right, you get it all together and just slap me an email.
Or they just give it to you in paper.
Absolutely. Thank you. Well, I don't wanna tell, I'll look through this. I also, so that'll give me disagreement. I would like to give all the information concerning our leasing program to Mr. Ford and have him contact a business banker and a CPA partner, and have him analyze those leases to see if it's better to lease or to buy.
Mr. Mullins has already talked to Michelle Olson, to Debbie Nelson, to myself and Chief Deputy Stromberg, giving him all of the information. He likes to disagree with it, even though all three of us keep giving him the same stuff. If you wanna do it, feel free, but we've already done it with him three times. If he got to you and you wanna share that with other people and waste their time, feel free.
I will give it to Mr. Ford, and the third party can decide as far as I'm concerned, whether it's better to buy in cash or to pay finance charges on a vehicle.
I have a question. I have that question.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So if we're asking a third party to do that, do we have to pay for the third party, or do they do that for free?
We'll ask them. We'll bring it back if they have a charge. Now we're concerned about money. Interesting.
All right, let's keep on.
As far as the jail, the jail wants, the, the state wants all seventy-two beds. Apparently, that contract is sitting somewhere. I would like to be on the next agenda. The contract for the state. I'd like to have Mr. Swanson or his representative on the video, and I wanna know what we're doing. We voted as a commission unanimously months ago to rent seventy-two beds. I'm ready to approve the contract. I'm ready to prove the chair to sign it.
We don't have it.
That's why I wanted on next meeting, so we can have one to look at. So we're waiting months for this. So we voted seventy-two beds, let's go. Okay, the I'm not sure, I just wanna follow up on it. Do we owe approximately seven hundred thousand dollars to the builder of the sheriff's office? I saw on the budget, I found three hundred thousand budgeted. So do we, is that the only amount we own? Are we making payments? What, I'm not sure what's going on there.
That's.
Sure.
You're talking about the.
I call that, project alternates, right.
So there was a million dollars budgeted for twenty twenty-five for the sheriff's office facility. Three hundred thousand was set aside to pay the lease, waters, all that stuff for this year. Seven hundred thousand was set aside for project alternates. Commission approved up to one point three one, something million, project alternates. County commission voted to pay seven hundred thousand this year in the project alternates, three hundred thousand next year in project alternates, and the remaining balance plus interest, if any remaining balance, in twenty twenty-seven.
Can we pay that early?
You're talking to the wrong guy.
Okay, can we pay that early? We need to find that out? Because.
The answer is yes, but I can't tell you what you can and can't pay. He'll take the payment early.
Okay, I'm, that's, I'm asking what, is there, is there a no penalty? All right, so we should look at paying that off early. Cuz if we got money in somewhere collecting three percent interest, and we're paying seven percent interest to finance it, we're losing money.
Commissioner, you're talking about paying early the alternates.
Pay it all off next year.
Entire thing?
Yes.
Yeah, I, and, and I can talk about this on the fifth. I asked Ms. Morse to put it on the agenda, but I did talk to Mr. Huber this morning, so I have, I'll have the information for it.
Okay, I'm, I'm not gonna bring you many cuts till, we'll see if this motion passes, and I got plenty of cuts to bring forward if it fails.
You're done?
Yeah, thank you.
We have a motion on the fourth, please pass by ourselves with the legality, basically, like, that would turn, I remember from forty-five minutes ago. All right, all those in favor?
Roll call, vote please.
Sure. Mr. Murphy?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
You sure can. I just want to acknowledge the program managers of the county, um, for their professionalism and, um, really looking at cutting their costs wherever they could. There were, um, minimal increases compared to quite a bit of decreases, and I, I, um, I believe, or this may be a personal issue, but I respect their opinions, they're professionals, they're trained in that subject content area. And I just think we, as a commission, need to, um, be appreciative of program managers doing the best that they can in making cuts and also working hard to continue in getting contracts with various entities so that we can continue to make improvements. And I just wanna acknowledge that.
Oh, uh, Mr. Ford, ma'am, I speak.
Go ahead.
Scrap that about the third party. If we don't care about money, we don't care about money. So don't bother looking into it. I'm sure the public can decide that, just.
Contracted services. I think we need to talk about that anymore. Is there anything else that we need to?
Move back.
Golden, right, Gorman Field, I would notice.
I can speak to that now, Chair, quickly. Uh, at the, at the last commission meeting, um, the commission asked Mr. Magnuson to send out an notification within three miles of the Gorman Field for the paving of the runway.
Yes.
Uh, I spoke with Mr. Magnuson yesterday. It's just, it's not feasible for him. Uh, there's no master list. He'd have to reach out to the post office. It would be a pretty big expense to the county, and it wouldn't be done in time. Uh, and he would have to manually input every address, which would take from days upon days. Uh, so with that in mind, being the commission to direct him to do three miles, he's asking to go back to the standard of the one mile.
So we just need a motion to.
Move.
First and second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to say I, I oppose?
Over here. Good.
Any speakers?